Okay, I'm gonna call this village board meeting for February seventeen, two thousand twenty to order. Roll call, please.
Joseph Zitzelberger.
Here.
Joseph Mungy. Phil Ramon.
Here.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Anne Moran.
Here.
Gary Herschel.
Here.
Okay, first we have confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, online availability.
I can confirm that the agenda was published in Wanakee Tribune on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty. The final agenda was also posted on February fourteenth, two thousand twenty, at all three village posting locations. And the final agenda, the new package, will be available online on February fourteenth, two thousand twenty.
Thank you, Kylie. All right, first item we have is consent agenda. Would anybody like anything pulled? Or I'd look for a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Joseph Zitzelberger, second by Phil Williams. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, ayes have it. Public comments, or anybody here who'd like to address the board an issue that's not on the agenda for this evening? Okay, hearing none, I will just say, Gary, it's good to see you after your surgery. And you're moving around, that's good. I don't even see any crutch. What do I see? Oh, I guess I see a cane over there.
Got a cane.
So, good to see you. All right, next we have presentations, Wanakee Neighborhood Connection update. Todd, do you want to introduce or anything?
Well, Lisa Huminek is here, the director of WNC. And we try to invite them in once a year to fill the board in on what's shaking and share their story with the public a bit more, so.
Perfect.
All right. Thank you for including me on your agenda this evening. I'm looking forward to sharing with you some updates about where we've been and where we are headed, which is pretty exciting. I think a lot of you are probably familiar with some of the history of Wanakee Neighborhood Connection. It was started very informally by Jenna Eaton in two thousand three, out of her garage, basically, and noticed that some people believed he needed help and people around her and her neighborhood could provide that assistance. And so, for about three years, four years, it was very informal, moved around to a couple of different locations in the community. But by two thousand seven, she had secured five oh one C three nonprofit status for the organization and formalized it. So we really, just this past Friday, February fourteenth, two thousand seven, was the date we had received that status, and so we were celebrating our thirteenth anniversary this year. In two thousand fourteen, there was a successful capital campaign, and the organization was able to secure and renovate the building at
Two oh eight.
South Century Avenue, and has been there for the past five and a half years. So some things that are new, I've been there for about eighteen months now. Jenna left the organization from being the founder and its first executive director in May of two thousand eighteen. I joined the organization in September of two thousand eighteen. And if you watch our social media or our website, you see that this past Friday, in celebration of our anniversary, we did introduce a new logo, a new tagline, and a new website. And so you can see the logo has the two neighbors holding hands with the heart in between and the name of the organization. Moved away from just having the WNC on the logo because it often didn't know what that meant, and if you Google it, you found a lot of things in western North Carolina. So, we thought we'd make it a little more local to Wanakee and introduce a new logo. The tagline is "The Heart of Our Community," really represents the caring that everyone in the community brings to each other through the work of Wanakee Neighborhood Connection. And over this past year, our board has done a lot of strategy work and redefined our mission, which is to provide programs and resources that engage neighbors in supporting and empowering one another. And we really have two areas of focus. One is financial stability. We want to make sure that families in Wanakee have what they need in order to achieve that. And then the second part of it is really community volunteerism, because we have over about twelve hundred Wanakee residents that volunteer with us every year, and through that experience, I think they gain a lot from volunteering and also having really meaningful connections with their neighbors from all types of backgrounds. Other things that are new, we added a case manager shortly after I started, so we now have someone on staff who has a background in family services, knows how to network with other social service agencies throughout the county, and is doing some great case management with our client families. We've added some structure and support to all of our volunteer activities and more than triple the number of regular volunteers that we have coming in over the past eighteen months. We've standardized all of our financial record keeping to meet nonprofit best standards. We've built our board and implemented transparency and governance standards as well. We've improved our client intake process to allow us to really evaluate how successful we're being with the clients and do some real meaty evaluation of the difference that we're making in people's lives. We've, as I mentioned, added case management. We're now coordinating services with a number of other agencies, about forty other agencies, so that things that we can't provide, we're making sure that our client families can receive that. And then we also added a volunteer program for families, and so parents and their kids can volunteer together, and we've currently got over a hundred and thirty local families that are signed up to do that. So our focus really is on those most vulnerable families in our community. And some of you may be familiar with the term ALIS, which stands for Asset Limited, Income Constrained But Employed, or in other words, the working poor. And so when we look at need in Wanakee, we know that the poverty rate is actually very low, only a little over three percent, but if we look at that ALIS threshold, which is considered to be about a little over nineteen thousand for a single individual, sixty thousand, sixty-one thousand actually for a family of four, almost fifteen percent of our households are below that ALIS threshold. And really, about ninety percent of our clients are working adults, maybe have more than one job, but aren't bringing in enough to make ends meet on a monthly basis. Average rent in Wanakee, I think, is another key factor. When we look at that ALIS threshold and we look at what is needed for a household survival budget, that's generally based on five hundred dollars a month for a single individual to about seven hundred a month for a family. And we know that our average rent here is well above that, at about nine eighty per month. So by the numbers, the number of clients that we are serving currently, a hundred and fifty-nine client households, and that represents about five hundred and twenty individuals. Our biggest program is our free store, so that's one of the things we really monitor, is how many people are coming in to use the free store. So last month, it was sixty families making a total of a hundred and ten visits to the store. And I think what's really significant also now, you can see the numbers from the time we were founded through December of last year, but this is the growth we've seen just over the past eighteen months. So when I started, shortly after I started with the organization, we were right about eighty-three families when I started in August of eighteen. We're now up to a hundred and fifty-nine households that are receiving services through Neighborhood Connection. And I really attribute that to better partnerships in the community. We're working very closely with the school district, as well as the senior center, and getting referrals from them, as well as the other social service agencies that we work with, as well as adding the case manager to our staff. So we're also getting referrals from other social service agencies throughout the county when they're working with Wanakee area residents. If we look then at individuals being served, again, from the time I started in August eighteenth, we're at two hundred and sixty-eight. We're now at, again, that five hundred and twenty individuals that are receiving services through Neighborhood Connection. So this gives you then an idea of the types of programs that we are providing for our neighbors that are most vulnerable. And probably the most well-known and the most visible is our free store, and that takes up about seventy percent of our building there on Century Avenue. But families can come in and get clothing, household goods, cleaning supplies, and toiletries. They can come in once a week or more if they need it to get things that they may need. All of those items are donated by residents of the community, you know, as they're cleaning out things in their house and find that they've got some gently-used items that they can donate. That's what comes into the store. We've also got some great retail partnerships with Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, Williams-Sonoma, and Pottery Barn, and get merchandise from them on a monthly basis. And then for the toiletries and cleaning supplies, we have a lot of organizations and businesses in town that do drives for us throughout the year, and that's generally how we get those items in. We also have a build-a-bed program. We always want to make sure that families have a comfortable, safe, warm place to sleep, and for a lot of different reasons, nonprofit organizations do not work with used mattresses in any way. So we get grant funding as well as donation, monetary donations from the community. We work with Wanakee Furniture ETC. They get the mattresses for us at cost and then do the delivery and setup free of charge, so that is a wonderful partnership that we have here in the community. In fact, this past month, we've placed six beds in families' homes. Probably also, you see in August, the bus sitting outside our location, fill the bus for school supplies. That's also a big program and important to our families throughout the year. And they share with us, too, that the most significant programs throughout the year are the free store year-round, but then the holiday programs, the adopt a family holiday meals. Again, we've seen tremendous growth here. Last year, we had about forty-five families that were adopted through the adopt a family program. This year, we were up to seventy-four. And that's really due to the generosity of the community. We have that many families, businesses, organizations come forward wanting to take on a family for the holidays, so we were really encouraged to see that. We also take care of vehicle repairs for our clients. Many of them are in hourly positions, so if they miss a shift or two, not only does it hit the bottom line for their family for the month, but they might lose their position. So if a vehicle goes down, we want to make sure we can get that fixed for them as quickly as possible and get them back on the road into work and school and so forth. For those families for whom English is not their primary language, we have an English language group where they can learn conversational skills in a very casual and supportive setting. We have a scholarship that's given each year to a student, usually to a graduating senior from Wanakee High School, but sometimes to an older adult client who may be continuing their education somewhere. Last year, we launched our Neighbor to Neighbor Fund, which is an emergency crisis fund for families who are going through a short-term situation where they might need some financial assistance. We can provide that through the Neighbor to Neighbor Fund, and as I mentioned, case management is also an important part of our services. As I said, our board has been doing a lot of strategy work during this past year and has adopted a new community impact plan for this year and next, and we've got six key areas that we are working toward achieving. The first is to attain financial sustainability. I mentioned earlier that we had a really successful capital campaign five and six years ago to get the building. There were some reserves left over from that, so there had been some savings. However, the last four years, the organization has had some pretty significant operational losses, and so we're getting to the point where those reserves are about tapped out, so we need to make sure that we turn the financial situation around. So, actually, what I'm spending most of my time on now is fund development. We've seen some positive signs there, and we added about a hundred new donors last year, and if we look at year-end giving, November, December is the time when a lot of funding comes in for nonprofit organizations. It was twenty-five thousand dollars in twenty eighteen. Twenty nineteen, it was about sixty thousand. So we're seeing the trajectory grow up, but we know we've still got a gap to fill. We want to make sure that we're providing present and effective programs, so again, we've implemented a lot of things to really evaluate what that impact is, and not just be able to share numbers, but to talk about the true change that's happening in people's lives because of the services they are receiving. We want to certainly build community trust and accountability, make sure that we're very transparent about our operations and our finances and so forth, and make sure that we're then achieving top-of-mind community awareness, because we know people who've lived in Wanakee for years and don't know what that, you know, WNC is, that they drive by on Century Avenue. So we're working to make sure that everyone in the community is aware of what we do and how they can access our services, but also come in and volunteer and donate. Want to make sure, again, that our programs are efficient and effective and our operations are the same, and we want to make sure that we're ensuring a positive culture and that we are a really safe place for families to come when they need that assistance, know that it can be confidential, if that's what they so desire, and that they're going to get what they need, and then also a very positive culture for the donors and volunteers who come in to make a difference through what they're able to give to Neighborhood Connection. So as we look down the road and think about what's next, as I mentioned, ongoing program evaluation is something new for us, so you'll see that being implemented over the next year to eighteen months, and we'll be able to share out with the community what those results are. We're also increasing educational programs, not only for our clients, but also for the community at large, to learn about issues that are important in the community. And then we're also going to be launching very soon our Neighborhood Champions campaign and donor recognition program, and really try to encourage people to give to Neighborhood Connection on a monthly basis, so that we don't see a lot of ups and downs in our cash flow, and we can be more consistent in the services we provide. So that gives you a general overview of where we are and where we're going, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone may have.
Thank you. Any questions for our board members?
A quick one about the logo.
Sure.
I see Wanakee is very small. Is there
Right.
Is there a goal to grow Neighborhood Connection beyond Wanakee, or?
There actually is not, and the only reason it's smaller is that instead of using the WNC acronym all the time, we are now referring to the organization's Neighborhood Connection.
Okay.
So we wanted that to be the prominent part of the logo, so that people start to get used to that and use it. Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah, thank you. We're happy with it, too. That was, we worked with a team at Salzstrauß on developing that. We're really happy to have the partnership on that.
Space, space in your building is adequate yet for your needs?
Yeah, so far it has been adequate. I think, you know, we'd love to have a community room of some type, but there are other places in the, in the community that we can access that, but yeah, it has been. We're about sixty-five hundred square feet, and it's working really well for us.
Thank you for all you do for the community.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next item we have is license permits. Discuss and take action on operator license applications for Jeremy Werner, Eric Growth, and Allison Altough.
Assistant Department's approval of operator license applications for Jeremy Werner, Eric Growth, and Allison Altough, subject to successful completion of an approved responsible beverage server training course and review by the Wanakee Police Department.
I approve approval of the operator license applications for Jeremy Werner, Eric Growth, and Allison Altough, subject to successful completion of an approved responsible beverage server training course and review by the Wanakee Police Department.
Okay, motion by Phil Williams. Second by Phil Ramon. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, ayes have it. Under new business, we have discuss, discussion on recent issues and regulations regarding sex offender residency restrictions. Todd, who's going to introduce his? Brian, do you want to introduce?
Sure, or do you want to go first, chief, or?
I can, why don't I step up, provide a little background information on how we ended up here, and then you can.
Perfect.
On Friday morning, February seventh, Wanakee Police Department released a bulletin regarding a recently convicted sex offender who's residing on North Madison Street at Cross Prairie School. The offender was convicted the previous week of attempted secondary sexual assault of a child and child enticement. He received a lengthy probation sentence. The bulletin was posted on our Facebook page, shared with the school district superintendent and with the Wanakee Tribune. We also performed a door-to-door canvas in that neighborhood. The bulletin provided two phone numbers for Department of Corrections and indicated that Corrections determined living arrangements for the offender. Late in the day, on the seventh, I was informed by Department of Corrections that the offender had moved from the village effective immediately. There's a couple of points, and I think this is kind of how we ended up here tonight, but just to give some more information and clarify a few points. We were first notified of the offender on February fifth, not by the Department of Corrections, but by a village resident who had heard about it from someone else, who had heard about it from someone else, essentially third or fourth hand, and it got to us. After we received the information, we confirmed that this individual was, in fact, out on probation, was residing at six oh one Madison Street. We then contacted the offender's probation agent at the Wisconsin Department of Corrections. We expressed our concern regarding this offender and his current living situation, given the nature of the convictions and proximity to Prairie School. We were informed Corrections was reviewing the offender's residence status, and we get back with us. In the interim from February sixth until the morning of February seventh, we did not receive any correspondence back from Corrections, although we started receiving a great deal of feedback from the community that they were starting to hear about this individual. On Friday morning, February seventh, after we did not receive the information from Corrections, we contacted a different branch of Department of Corrections. We provided information for the bulletin, which we distributed a short time later. A couple of things on this. I learned a number of citizens had called the phone numbers for Department of Corrections, and we provided in our bulletin. Some citizens reported they were told by staff there that it was not the Department of Corrections who determines where an offender on active supervision of the, but rather it's the municipality. This is definitely not accurate. It is Department of Corrections that determines where that individual lives. And put that into perspective, we didn't make the determination that that person was going to move. By the end of the day, the Department of Corrections had made that determination. So, the information they got was not accurate. I think it caused, led to some confusion on this, and there were some other social media posts that led to some confusion on this issue as well. On Friday afternoon, February seventh, I did speak with a representative of the Department of Corrections, and they did acknowledge that they were providing information that was not accurate and that this offender was the responsibility to determine placement. The second part of this is probably why we ended up here tonight, and that's the topic of the sex offender ordinance. I received a number of calls about this particular offender, and I also received feedback from people talking about that they read on social media that we need to get an ordinance, a sex offender ordinance, if we had an ordinance, this would have never happened. A couple of things, that's definitely not true in this case. This individual that was convicted actually resided there for years at the same address before he was convicted. I think Corrections was likely in the process of determining a permanent residence for him, but they had not done so yet. The information got out ahead of, I think, what their intentions were. But there are some difficulties with a sex offender ordinance. There are some challenges to that. I don't want people to get the false impression that if we get an ordinance, things like this wouldn't happen in the future. There are restrictions on who sex offenders, what sex offenders would be covered, what level of offender if we did get an ordinance, but I just want to put this perspective. I had the opportunity to talk with a police chief last week who had worked in a community that had a sex offender ordinance. He described the ordinance as having very limited benefit. He talked about the process and what if you did take an offender and try to go through the process of enforcing the ordinance. And he indicated that a violation of the village ordinance would start with the offender being noticed that he's in violation. That offender would get a certain amount of time to leave, thirty, sixty, ninety days, a hundred and twenty days, it depends on which, what your ordinance would be. If that offender does not move, the offender is issued an ordinance citation with a court date. That is a civil forfeiture. That individual is, receives a municipal court citation, essentially it's a speeding ticket. If that individual does not pay that ticket, it's a civil fine. It's a civil forfeiture. If that offender does not move and refuses to move, the municipality has to make decisions about what the remedy is going to be for that, and that remedy is through circuit court. And the question comes up about accrual of fees, costs associated with that for the outcome that you're potentially looking for. And I know that Brian Klymeyer has done some work on this, and this is just, this police chief talking to me is just one aspect of the difficulties of having an ordinance. And I think to put it in perspective, I want to say about twenty-five percent of municipalities in Wisconsin actually have a sex offender ordinance. This is not really what it was made out. There's misinformation on social media. There's been some posts here in this community talking about this is what we need to do, and it's just a blanket fit, and it's going to work, but there are a number of hurdles to this, and I would just defer to Brian on some of the other legal requirements and some of the difficulties with having an ordinance. And I'd be willing to answer any questions I can to the board.
Why don't we do this, why don't we go to Brian and see what he has to say first, and then questions, we can ask questions when that's done. Does that sound good to everybody? Okay.
Okay, so I, everything the chief said, I agree with. I have looked into this since the February seventh circumstance. We certainly can adopt an ordinance. The research that I've done suggests that it is about twenty-five percent of municipalities in the state that have a sex offender ordinance. There's six hundred cities and villages in the state, so, you know, somewhere between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and seventy-five have it. It's, it's an ordinance that, if you're gonna, if you're gonna, if the village wants to adopt it, it's one of these where we're gonna have to put a little bit of time into it. There, and part of the reason for that is there was a twenty-seventeen federal court case in Wisconsin that invalidated an ordinance in the village of Pleasant Prairie for sex offender ordinance. And essentially, what the court said, without getting into too much detail, is they didn't have a sound basis for adopting the ordinance. They hadn't looked at studies that show, you know, that really backed up what they had in their ordinance. And effectively, what the ordinance said was, if you are a sex offender, you cannot live within a certain number of feet of a school or a park or other, some type of place where there might be children. And effectively, what happened then is that meant that you couldn't, as a sex offender, you couldn't live in the municipality at all, and that was one of the things that the court found invalid for a couple of constitutional reasons. So, you know, we definitely have the ability to adopt an ordinance if we want to. We would be, what I would be doing, if you wanted me to look into that, is be looking at some of these ordinances that were recently amended, because what happened was after this twenty-seventeen case, a number of the communities that had the ordinances in place took steps to amend them. And in part, what they were doing is they were cutting down the number of feet between, okay, if I'm a sex offender, some of them had five thousand feet or two thousand feet, and they're cutting that in half, or they're bringing it down to five hundred feet of, you know, where you can live. There are state statutes already in place. The fact, I don't, I don't, and there's different categories of sex offenders. And so, the, the one that seems to be the most significant, based on the offenses that have been committed, is in chapter nine eighty of the statutes, and that's a sexually violent person. And so within that statute right now, there are already rules where if you have been convicted of, of one of these crimes that chapter nine eighty applies, you can't live within fifteen hundred feet of a school, a park, other things. If you've, if your offense was related to, let's say, an adult who needed some assistance, then you can't live within fifteen hundred feet or a certain distance of a nursing home. If it's against a child, then there's even more restrictions on who your neighbors can be. So there is a state statute that's already in place. The fact that Corrections had this individual moved this quickly, you know, basically within a two-day period or a day period, suggests to me that possibly this person fell under this chapter ninety, nine eighty. I don't know that for a fact, but just the speed with which Corrections moved suggested that, and the reason I want to point that out is we're preempted as a municipality from having rules that are more restrictive that are in chapter nine eighty. And so when it comes to sexually violent offenders, that we're gonna, we can adopt an ordinance that's consistent with the rules that are in chapter nine eighty, but we can't do anything, we can't have stronger provisions. That, and then, you know, if you want us to look at the ordinance, that's when we're going to start looking into, okay, we know what we can do with, with this particular category. What about other categories? What can we do? And that's where we would look at other ordinances, particularly the ones that have been updated within the last two years in light of the case. And, you know, we also have to have bases to support whatever position we take. This isn't, you know, we're going to change the speed limit on a particular street, and so we, it takes fifteen minutes to put together the ordinance and bring it back to you. You know, one of these ordinances for the village of Waterford, when they updated there, they had nine paragraphs of recitals before you even got to the ordinance, and each paragraph, or almost all the paragraphs, were citing different studies that they had looked at to support the ordinance that they were adopting. And the reason they're doing that is because if you're going to go through this process, you certainly want to try to have something that's going to be enforceable. And when, if you, even if you just Google this, and you, and if you look at the different stories where Reidsberg, Reidsberg amended their ordinance, City of Brookfield amended their ordinance, City of Milwaukee, they're actually, you know, the attorneys in those places that helped them with the initial ordinances had now come back to them after the twenty-seventeen case and said, "Look, we got to change our code, because right now we're going to get sued, and it's going to invalidate it, and it's not going to do us any good to have an ordinance that's, that's not going to be valid." So even though it's not as strong as the ones that were previous to twenty-seventeen, at least the changes they made to them made the communities feel that at least if they got challenged, it would be held up in court. And I can, you know, try to, you know, answer whatever questions you might have. I mean, I just kind of summarized the information I've been looking at, but, you know, the bottom line is, yes, we can, we can go through the process of adopting an ordinance. I do agree with the chief that enforcement could become an issue, and if you're put in a position where you have to go to circuit court, like to, essentially what you would do is you would file a nuisance claim against the offender, saying that they are, they are, they're in violation of our code, and in doing so, there, it's a nuisance, so you would have to go to court to get the court to agree with you, and at that, that's the point that you could then probably remove the person from the household. But just because they're in violence or violation of the code doesn't mean that we're going to send the police in there three days later and pull them out of their house. It doesn't work that way.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you. Questions from board, numbers four. Gary, go ahead.
I'm trying to understand the placement. So, let's assume in Dane County here, there are ten cities and villages of our size, and seven of those have a ordinance in their village or city. Is, is it going to, the people that are placing these offenders, are they going to say, "Well, we don't want to place them in one of those seven cities because they have ordinances"? Well, let's choose Wanakee because they don't have one. Is that something that could happen? Do you become chosen to place people because you don't have this ordinance in place?
I think one of the things that Brian touched on is depending on the level of offender, there are restrictions in place already talked about with the next month for you to school. I don't know the state statute well enough to speak on behalf of them.
I mean, what I can tell you is that's definitely been a concern that's raised when you look at some of these stories, and they're getting comments from elected officials. I, I think the rules are effectively, you, you definitely want to place the person in the same county where the offense, in other words, you're not moving people from county to county. I do believe, I'd have to check on it, but I do believe that the idea is, if somebody has lived in a particular community, the idea is to try to have them remain in that community if at all possible, to kind of avoid what, the issue that you raised, Gary, but- But that's something that we can look into a little bit further, if you guys want us to.
So Joe, you were the one that asked to have this on the agenda for this evening, so do you have any questions right now?
Really, the one that comes to mind, can you speak to the relationship that Wannakee PD typically has with Department of Corrections? If the reaction time in this particular case was, I guess, consistent with what you typically see?
This was not consistent at all, usually they're very quick to respond to us.
So this was longer?
This was longer, yeah. Even though it was only a day and a half in duration, there was multiple attempts by us to get a response back. And it didn't happen. We've not run into this before with corrections.
So typically that's a fairly good?
Very much, very responsive, they've always been responsive.
Have there been other scenarios, obviously not identical to this, but similar to this, where there's a leak of information prior to you guys actually hearing an official notice?
Definitely, of course, the time has been.
And is that a concern for you or?
It's always nice to know that in advance and then we could, likely, we probably wouldn't be standing here tonight.
Sure.
Had we found out about it from corrections, we'd have a discussion and probably come to a pretty quick conclusion on this of what actions they were going to take. But I don't, I'm assuming somebody went on a sex offender website and they saw a post down there that his address was on there, we didn't know what it was. But again, it literally came from someone to someone else to someone else to us. So we didn't, we didn't.
So they're not required, corrections are not required to consult with you ahead of time on placement? Is that, I'm correct in understanding that?
Not ahead of, there was no placement here, this gentleman was living here for a number of years. And I believe it was January twenty-eighth he was convicted. I think we got the information following Wednesday. I don't know when they posted it on their website. I think they weren't even aware it was on there until somebody else brought it to our attention. But generally, they act very quickly to contact us if this was an anomaly or?
And so if this would have been a new placement, would they have contacted you beforehand to say, hey, we're gonna be moving somebody into the community? Okay. Would they have contacted, consulted you on where might be the best place to locate them, you know?
They would have likely told us what address they were going to do that, and that has occurred in the past. In fact, it occurred in the first part of January, they were talking about bringing an offender to Wannakee and we were not comfortable with that location and that person did not come over here.
Is it usually, my experience is there are usually placements with family? Is that what you get?
I've seen both, if they do have relatives, I think a family structure, they're trying to get that individual back in for support. That's what we've seen in the past.
When that becomes sort of a thing like, this is where the sister lives, you're gonna live there.
Yeah.
And that house then is not in range of her brother, uncle, or whatever.
Do you have any questions?
Chief, thank you for acting briskly in a businesslike manner.
So I'm just gonna ask a couple of questions, some to Brian, some to Kevin. As our chief law enforcement person here in the community, what is your opinion? Do you believe that we have a good system in place that takes care of this? Or do you believe we should take it a step further and create an ordinance when twenty-five percent already have it? And seventy-five percent don't?
Sure, and I don't know enough about the statutes to be able to tell you whether we should have this ordinance or not. I don't know that. The system has worked so far, but again, it didn't obviously work very well in this situation. It was resolved quickly, it was resolved in the same day we put the bulletin out. Whether we should have an ordinance or not, I can't speak to that until there likely will be some sort of information gathering and, you know, determination. Again, the difficulty in this is social media, there were posts of just get this ordinance and we're never gonna have this again, and that is far from being accurate. That's where a lot of our difficulty comes from, from law enforcement, our posts and opinions on social media and people taking that as fact. That's what's been difficult over the years, not just with this, but with Wannakee.
So follow-up then, do you believe that us choosing to do an ordinance would make us a safer community than we already are, under current situation?
I'd have to see what the ordinance would say in the voting, I don't know.
Same questions to you.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're gonna have to
Thank you.
I think what we need, the issue here is, we know what we can do with respect to the sexually violent people under chapter nine eighty. In other words, all we can do is adopt an ordinance that's gonna be consistent with what the statute is. And it's not gonna, I don't think for that one, it's gonna materially change anything that's happening right now. Because, yeah, it sounds like there's a few speed bumps every once in a while with corrections, but for the most part, it works. And we wouldn't be able to put anything in place that is more stringent than what's in the statutes. I think the work that we couldn't do is, okay, but what about other categories that aren't necessarily captured by the statutes? But part of that is going to be then gathering the data. And quite frankly, we're gonna look at other communities and we're gonna look at this, I mean, I would think that we would look at the studies that they've looked at and then look at what they've put into place. And we may be able to make things, I guess, two things. One is, check on the issue of, you know, if you don't have the ordinance in place, are you more likely to get somebody placed in the community from outside the community than a community that does have an ordinance in place? And if the answer to that question is yeah, that would suggest that adopting an ordinance would be a good idea because then you're essentially on the same playing field as the other communities that have the ordinance. And then, what kind of power are we gonna have, regulatory power, over people who are sex offenders under the statutes, but they're not covered by chapter nine eighty? You know, we would have some authority, I think, on where they get to be, where they reside. But I also agree with chief that it's, it's not gonna be the be-all, end-all solution. I mean, it's very clear under the statutes and under the case law that you can't have something that says we're gonna prohibit sex offenders from living in the community. So there still would be sex offenders in the community. You'd have a little bit more control possibly over where they're gonna be if you have an ordinance. And the other thing that I would say is, if, I would view this as a two-step process. In other words, if you want us to do this, we would look at it and be able to provide more information and maybe even kind of a draft of an ordinance. But there's still gonna be information that we're gonna have to share with the board that we believe would support the ordinance, and then you would have to review it and probably have questions for us. So, you know, again, it's gonna take a little bit of time to do that legwork. And then there would probably be at least two meetings that would, we'd have discussions on this. And I think probably by, at least by that first meeting, we'd be in a better position to tell you, okay, here's what the pros are. Enforcement is going to be an issue though, and that's just, you know, if you're, if you're, as a municipality, you're gonna adopt an ordinance of this nature, it's only gonna work if you follow through with it. But it's also likely to cost a little bit of money on the enforcement portion of it.
So you've kind of walked into the next thing I was gonna ask about. So I'm assuming there's different degrees of sexual assault. There's also people that are put on probation, there's people that are, go to jail and spend time and serve their time for doing their offense. Would we have to handle that, would we, is that something we'd have to focus into as we're trying to formulate this? Is there a difference between somebody who has been to jail versus not been to jail? What level of offense it's going to be?
Well, I think that I would focus more on what it is that they've, the offense that they've been convicted of. As opposed, because you can have two separate judges, even in Dane County, and one would maybe sentence the person to probation and the other one would put, you know, they'd have to spend some time in jail. And then you, I don't think that that would be a rational basis then to distinguish one from the other. I think you would focus rather on what was the crime that they were convicted of as opposed to how they were sentenced. Now, one of the things that we have to be careful with, and this is one, going back to that case I was telling you about, this was one of the places where the municipality got tripped up. Because one of the constitutional claims was, you're punishing me twice for the same offense. In other words, I was convicted as a sex offender, I served my time, and now you're essentially punishing me through the ordinance by where you're telling me I can and cannot live. And so that, that was one of the reasons why it got overturned. Now, if you have language in the ordinance, in the recitals, if you showed that there's a rational basis and a reasonable basis for why you adopted this ordinance and why you have, you know, you're treating one set of individuals maybe different than the other, you know, that's where you can build the case to make sure that it's upheld. But it's a tricky process. So in the Pleasant Prairie case, one of the things that they said was, if you were a sex offender and you lived in this community, then you were gonna be treated differently than sex offenders who had not lived in the community. And that was another basis where they said, you don't have a rational, again, it goes back to, what were you convicted of? Not where you lived when you were convicted of that crime.
Kevin, when you're notified by corrections, do we have anything in place that we're monitoring differently? Those people?
That we're monitoring them differently?
That they're in the community?
Or can we? We gather our information from corrections, we go by what corrections, they provide us with guidelines, particularly on a bulletin. A statutory ability for us to provide a bulletin. So we rely on them, that they're a sex offender here, they've always worked outstanding with us. So we defer to what, generally to what they're, how they would request us to approach it. We have made, again, we made our opinion known on other cases. And I just mentioned the one that was like in the last four weeks, and they did not place that person in Wannakee. Whatever we can do to make a safer community, if it's notifying, putting a bulletin out, whatever it may be, that's what we do. Able to do statutory legal.
So, tonight, we're just having a discussion about this, correct? We're not making any decisions or anything, we're just having a discussion? Do we want to give some guidance to staff, I think is what we're looking at doing?
That's the one thing I think you can do, yeah.
Do we want to have them investigate more? What it would be to go down this ordinance or to create an ordinance?
I think, Chris, almost it's, probably this is the case of, I think we need to go down that direction to find out what an ordinance might do for us, get that background information. Because these are never an issue until something happens, and that is a big issue. So I think, you know, we need to do our homework here to understand what the ordinance at least can do for us. And then, if we want to take that other step and spend the money, because it's gonna cost money to implement an ordinance like this, you know, then we can make that decision, but I think it's probably the right thing to do.
Okay. Other opinions?
So what would have happened if the corrections hadn't taken them, changed the placement, would there have been any?
I don't know what level, we had so little information, it's happened quickly, I don't know what level of offender he was, if he was even statutory.
So it would depend on his level?
A number of ways, yeah. And again, we work with corrections, it's like, they have a separate unit for sex offenders, that's who we've dealt with continuously and we refer to their expertise in this.
We have two additional questions here. First one dealing with enforcement. I assume if we're going to move forward with something like this and we're going to enforce it, we need to enforce every instance that we are aware of in order for that to maintain any?
I would say yes.
And the second one escapes me. It's all right, I'm sure it'll come back. Oh, you didn't know what it was. In a situation like what we had, you know, a week and a half ago, do you find that in some cases, Department of Corrections will make changes or will move somebody purely for the safety of that person? Is that?
I can't answer that.
That comes up, I think, sometimes when the general rule is to put that, place that person in the county that the offense took, or wherever they were adjudicated. There are, there are exceptions that will allow them to be moved outside the county, and that could potentially be one of the reasons why.
Is it a situation where it's only the person or is it also the address? You can, like, where the building is, where the home is? Is that something you can direct to that instead of at the person? The ordinance?
Yeah.
So say, hey, right now we're directing that, the person that does it. Is it sort of similar to the VRBO thing where it's like, hey, it's that address is the problem? That person is living there?
I've only seen, I've only seen the ordinance actually address the people. And I think it's because of the, I mean, the foundation for the regulations that you put in place are the conduct of that particular individual. And so that, I think you'd have to stick with, with essentially what they've done. And then, you know, residence obviously becomes significant because of exactly where that residence happens to be located. You had made a point before, which is true, that the idea is if you can, if you can have one of these people reside with a family member is the goal. But sometimes they cannot achieve that goal because that particular family member or multiple family members all live within a certain distance of a, of a school or a park. And so, there was actually one story that I ran across was there was like some, you know, there was a number of sex offenders who were homeless because they actually could not find a place to cite them.
So this, this I believe is a very emotional issue for anybody in the community because it involves our children and this topic. And we're in a little bit of a tough spot right now because we can't really win. If we say we're going to do this, we're gonna have people that are saying they're spending all kinds of money to put something in place that, based on how one of you described it, really is gonna amount to a, you have a fine for the person?
Well, it's a fine, but it becomes a complicated issue. If that person doesn't move, then we're gonna go to circuit court and it becomes a, potentially a court issue.
Which we have that, and if we say we're not gonna do anything, then we're not doing anything and we're not, so. That's the bet I'm having, your comment, Gary, is a valid one. I think that if we can find the answers to that, it would help us a lot, which is, are we having people placed here because we don't have an ordinance?
Yeah, I don't know that.
And whose ordinance is the tightest?
Well, this is one of those circumstances where, I mean, I would view this, if we were gonna go down to this path, as essentially similar to the Airbnb. I mean, usually what a municipality wants to do is if they're gonna adopt an ordinance, it's, let's do whatever we can, that's as strict as can, within the legal boundaries. It's just, everything kind of got set on its head with the twenty seventeen case. So now you had a number of municipalities that kind of had to backtrack. Which we can take advantage of because now we're gonna be able to look at what, how they changed their code and how they updated it as opposed to what they had before they had to make the changes. But it is still going to be, you know, it's gonna take some time even just to kind of come back to you. I mean, what I would envision would be looking at some of these updated ordinances, kind of see how they deal with the different categories of sex offenders and then see how they, what restrictions they place on them. So those two things, and then also see what type of studies, studies or statistics that they've used to support the ordinance when they adopted it or amended it.
I don't think we need to make any motions, Gary, I think we're just trying to direct staff right now what to do. But if you have some, a comment that you'd say?
No, no, I mean, I'd like to go that direction. I mean, I think it's something we're gonna need to do.
Go that direction, so speak, speak the direction.
To have staff investigate, you know, give us some more information, give us some idea of maybe what the cost might be, you know, from start to finish, you know, to implement an ordinance like this. We don't have those answers yet, and I think those are important ones. And I don't, and we're not on a timeline that we have to have this done by, you know, June first. I mean, I think it's something that we go to staff and say, let's work on this and see what kind of information we get back.
I hate to give an attorney an open checkbook. I wouldn't say that we don't, I'm not trying to be mean or rude about that, but that's, to say that they're just gonna have them investigate opens up a little challenge in my world. But I think we want to maybe limit it to, here's what we want to find out. And Brian, Kevin, what do you think that's what we want to start with, with, based on what Gary's saying?
I think it's
Bring back to us and keep it within a, you know?
I think it's looking at other ordinances that have been adopted within the last two years to find out, how are they, how are they treating these different, we all know, again, the statute, the stat, there are certain statutes that preempt us. So we can't go any further than that. How have they identified the different categories of sex offenders? What regulations have they been put in place? And what have they relied on, relied on to support the ordinance?
Is that relatively easy for you to do?
Yeah, I mean, I already know the different ordinances that I'm probably gonna be taking a look at. I don't plan on looking at all the studies, I mean, that's something where I want to kind of gather them. But that's the thing that could take a while of, and quite frankly, that's something that, it's, if and when the village adopts an ordinance, I can tell you that we will have recitals in the ordinance. So before you even get to the text of the ordinance, you're gonna identify the basis for the ordinance. And you may not have to read every single study word for word or all the statistics, but you will, you will have to But you will, you will have to be able to say, yes, I've looked at these closely enough that, in fact, I do believe that they support the action that we're taking. So it would ultimately be homework for all of us.
Do you think there's any evidence that the, that the ordinances do anything? I mean, is there, that's what'd be mine, is it's the ordinance? Because you have the state statutes. Do the ordinances actually prevent us from becoming a magnet or whatever you want to call it?
Well, that's, I mean, that's the other thing that we'll check on is, but that's not necessary. That's more kind of just talking to people, trying to figure. Quite frankly, I'm not really aware of many communities in Dane County that have this. City of Madison does not have this ordinance. It's, when I was, the, the research that I was doing, it seemed like a lot of these ordinances were in the Milwaukee area, were seen in Kenosha, and into the Fox Valley. And so that maybe, you know, we'll look at that, but that's also information that we can provide to you of how many, if any, communities in Dane County even have an ordinance on this. It, it, it could be not many or it could be zero too.
Okay, so Gary's proposed kind of going down this and at least starting the process? Do we have a consensus for everybody saying yes, thumbs up to that? We have people that are opposed?
I think whichever way we go, it would be good to know.
That just knowing would be worth something to me too.
I'm glad, because all I saw was this.
Well, it's just good, I just, I don't think, from what I hear, I don't think we're going to be able to, it's not going to be hard ground that we're walking on.
June first is definitely debatable. No. Okay. So I guess that's our direction is to start the process and come back to us with that information that you described.
Okay.
Kevin, thank you for coming tonight and sharing with everybody. I would ask one other thing, I guess. Can I, can I still do that? So, I mean, I heard from quite a few residents, but we didn't have an opportunity for residents to weigh in on this. Is it, is this something that would, I mean, obviously if we change an ordinance, we'll have public hearings at that time, but?
Well, it'll be up to, I mean, this, I, I, I'm not sure if a public hearing would be required. I tend to think maybe because it seems, this seems somewhat zoning related. I mean, certainly if it's a zoning ordinance or even if it's not in the zoning code, if it's zoning related, you have to have a public hearing. You always have the ability to ca- call one, you know, even if, even if it's not required by the statutes. I don't think it would have been appropriate tonight for you to have one because, quite frankly, there just wasn't the information. I mean, Chief, obviously he provided some good information. I tried to give you whatever I could. When we come back the next time, we will have more information to share. And so, and, and I wouldn't, and I also wouldn't anticipate that we would actually have an ordinance for you to act on. It would be more, here's, here's the additional information that we talked about on February 17th. Now you have it. And then you'd either chew on it for a while and, and then decide what to do, either at the meeting or maybe even at a future meeting. Because it is a, it's an undertaking.
We did have one resident send into the village requesting us look at this too. I, I believe there was one. Todd, am I incorrect? Was there any more than that that sent in on our apps?
Uh, yeah, we received one, one message about wanting to have it discussed on the board, at the board meeting.
So I would, I would encourage residents who would like to address the board members to send us emails, reach out to us and let us know what your thoughts are. Okay. Next, we have discuss and take action on proposed amendment to the Woodland Crest Developers Agreement relating to infrastructure timelines and public utility extensions. Kevin?
Chris, I'd give a, a brief summary of what the agreement is. And Dan O'Callaghan's here, representing the developer, and Brian here as well to answer any questions. It really is, let me just summarize it as three main points to the amendment to the agreement. The first one is really extending the deadline for the improvements to June 15th. It was the first of the year. As many of you know, we had a shortened construction season because winter came early last year. I can say that the developer and the contractor have made a good faith effort in, in trying to move this project along. Uh, the second one is releasing the agreements from Lot Two. It certainly makes sense because the planning commission's approved a, a project on this development. So releasing that seems to, seems to be consistent with what we're trying to accomplish on that, on that lot. And then the third one is, is forward developments required to extend public utilities, mainly sewer and water, to the two single-family lots that are on the corner of Peaceville Valley and, and County Trunk Q. The access for that, for those lots eventually be internal. It's a requirement, part of the annex, the great annexation agreement that they have to provide access when that southern mod is developed. So that's a condition that, that's already in place and was reaffirmed at the planning commission. So with that, I'd answer any questions? And I'm sure Dan or Brian would be able to answer questions for you as well.
Board members, any questions? See a lot of shaking heads? No, I think that it was pretty self-explanatory. I mean, really the bottom line is the weather wasn't real agreeable and getting that January first date, that wasn't, wasn't able to be done. So I don't see any reason why we wouldn't, based on your recommendations.
I would make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg, second by Phil Williams. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, I just have it. Um, next we've got discuss and take action on next steps for village board strategic planning.
So this is part of our process to continue every second meeting of the month to discuss where we're at on our strategic planning process. And where we're at is our proceeding the steps for the national community survey process. In your packet, you saw a copy of the draft survey instrument that's been put together. And I do have a, a staff team assembled with a representative from each department that's going to sort of help, help oversee and foster this process along. And the NRC National Research Center is ready to kick this off with us. You also saw that schedule laid out for all the steps to bringing a survey from start to finish. What I did want to get from you, so that, nobody can read this, I'm certain, but just to show you space-wise, this is, this is a five-page mailed paper survey. The, the first four pages, all these questions I just scrolled through are what the NRC considers their standard questions that, that they seriously not desire not to see changed or augmented. Because they utilize these questions to compare and benchmark our community to others across the country. So it's, it's a model that they've perfected and covers, you know, covers the basics. But what they leave is this much room for custom questions. So these are custom closed-ended questions. Meaning there, there's multiple choices or you rank things. It's not, tell us what you love about Wantake with a big blank space. Although you can ask that question, it costs considerably more to add that type of work. Yeah, it's, it's just, it's time, it's staff time for the company. So, as we're working to fill that space, which we don't have to, but I, it makes sense to make use of it since it's included. I wanted to just get general thoughts from the board as to what you might want to gauge above and beyond what you saw the rest of the survey already accomplishes. If there were some low-hanging fruit, it may be some soon-to-be big decision items like aquatics. We could talk about, in a, a smaller, in a, in a smaller sense than the type of study we're planning to do, uh, community-wide. But we could get some scientific data on some of those desires. Meaning we can have very strong confidence that these answers will represent the ma- the mass of the community. So we could, we could tinker with aquatics, but I really wanted to just open up and get some of your thoughts.
Okay. Board members, comments? Kristen, you have the most expertise with surveys, so I'm going to, I'm going to defer to you a little bit on that.
Yeah, there are a couple of things I'd like to see added to it. They've got monthly housing costs, but if we could have value of home or assessment because housing, monthly housing costs can be really high and value of home really low. Um, that'll give us a, an indication of whether or not there's a correlation between value of home and some of the other items on that list.
So that's like a demographic category?
Yeah, it's a demographic category, yeah. So this is all in the demographic category. And then D-10, I think we need to expand the upper end of the scale for income. It tops out at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and we, we know that we skew higher than that in the community. So I probably would advocate adding a couple more categories on the upper end of that. And then, I, they don't have one on here and I haven't seen one in their bank, but it could be that I'm not using, looking correctly. And we do have on D-1, thinking about a typical week, how many times do you access the computer, check your email? But if we had a question specifically of when you're looking for information about the village, where do you go? Is it the village website? Is it that they talk to neighbors? Is it that they go to social media? As opposed to just a general use? Because that media use, that information can be really helpful.
I did see, I did look at some sample surveys from other communities. That particular question?
Yeah.
Was not unusual to be added. Do you use Facebook blog?
Village website.
Wantake Tribune.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, I mean, it's a great survey. It's a great, these are just kind of small things that I would add to it.
Okay. Other board members?
Well, you know, every once in a while, I think on a survey, it'd be kind of nice to have a little box for you to explain and answer or something like that. For example, down here it says, how likely or unlikely are you rec- to recommend someone to live in Wantake? If they say unlikely, why? Uh, what, what could we do to improve the quality of life? This is yes, no. We like it, we don't like it. Is there a little place where we can get an opinion? Or what they really want to say?
Um, that, that's a matter of, that's a matter of efficiency for managing the survey at an affordable price. We can, we can, there are add-on options to get more open-ended answers. Those don't necessarily give us, they can't necessarily be categories as sci- scientific either, but it opens up the opportunity for that to be part of the, part of the effort. The other thing we can do, or that I would intend to do, as we do roll out this survey, for people who aren't randomly selected, and even those who are, to remind them that we do want to hear about those sorts of ideas or those sorts of responses and use our own processes to solicit that feedback while they're thinking about it here. Encouraging emails to staff or to the board. That might be an approach we could take. Kristin, do you have other thoughts on?
Yeah, I, given the list, if somebody answers that, I can probably do a regression analysis and find out if it's an issue related to, you know, openness of the community or cost or age of life. We might be able to get not their exact, but what kind of the trend over the overall population that would, what's, would cause them to not recommend. I'd say if, along, but to add to Phil's on that same question, number three, remain in Wantake for the next five years? If there was a second option, if somebody says that they're not likely? If we could find out, just to checkbox why? Job transfer, planned move? I asked that question in Cottage Grove when I did their community survey, which was a random sample. And the majority of the people that were leaving, it was related to either retiring someplace warmer or, or jo- anticipated job transfers. Yeah. And so, I mean, a couple of other answers in there too, that it was like, not that they didn't like the community, but they knew they weren't going to be sticking around. Because that, that can be a real kind of red flag if, wow, 25% of the residents are thinking of leaving. That would be shocking. But then if it's all related to anticipated job transfers.
But that, if, if we see that sort of data, Phil, if something jumps off the page that we feel we would want more context on, the next step from this is we identify those, those things. Maybe there's going to be three or four things that jump off the page. And that would then lead us into another level of study that would probably involve focus group and additional citizen interaction to really put our, put our finger on that and have some more meaningful discussions to flush it through.
I, I just, I, I answer a lot of surveys because I think it's something you should do. And frequently on these surveys, if you don't fill out something in that box, they won't let you out of it. They really want input. And I, I think, you know, just the reason for sending out a survey is to get input. If this gets it in this form, that's fine. But I was just wondering, you know, maybe, you know, maybe that wasn't the only place. I just picked out a spot, but.
Yeah.
Just, just the way I think.
On number eight here, for example, they ask if they have a question about use bus, rail, subway, or other public transportation instead of driving? Well, I'm not sure we have any of that here. And so I'd rather take a question like that out of there and say, you currently use the walking trails in Wantake? To give us some information about what percentage of people are using our trails? And should we focus on improving more trails or reducing them? I mean, is it an issue for people? So I'd rather maybe switch some of these questions up. And Sue could maybe help with some of those too. Just about specific things within our parks or public works that kind of help us hone in on a specific issue that, you know, might be street maintenance and might be walking trails, biking trails. So it'd help us.
Um, we, we have not yet gone through, and we can delete the items that simply are not applicable to Wantake. So that example you caught, we might, we might find those. Although, although talking about transportation needs is maybe a very good question to ask if it's not dealt with enough here, because that comes up frequently.
I would maybe add, I know it's been briefly discussed, like, long-term if, you know, Wantake being on the bus route or if we had some sort of connectivity to that. So maybe that's one of our extra ones we put on or keeping it in there somehow like that.
Or finding out if there are people that are going to Madison and then getting on the bus or getting on the rail. That would be good to know. So, yeah, you, yeah. I know quite a few people that go and they park and then they, they bust downtown to avoid parking.
I don't know if I'm missing it, um, or if we could add it somewhere, um, if people think, you know, someone with a need that Wantake is accessible or if, you know, we have great concern about that, so.
Accessible?
Um, kind of on the transportation.
Okay.
For getting around or our buildings and services.
I wonder if there are any questions about, that we could add to about retirees? Like, um, are there any essential services we're missing for people who are, are retired and limited in transportation or?
Okay. Any other comments? I don't, other than if there was something about parking right, I don't believe we have a parking right here official. But maybe people would be interested in that here. Yes, about busing a lot, bus and traffic. There's several areas where you have bus and transit service and throughout the, through the survey. So we're definitely asking about that. Maybe we want to keep it and maybe we don't. But I think it's important that we talk and address our travel needs out into the future. You know, when people won't actually drive their cars and they just order a car on their phone and the car picks them up outside their home and takes them to where they're going. So that's, those are things we need to think about.
It's easy.
Yeah. Send me a text, I come to it.
Can it be? Good feedback.
Good feedback?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. All right. Next, we have discuss and take action on separate notices of claim filed by the following property owners who are seeking partial refunds and property taxes paid for the 2018 year. Robert Becker, William and Levon Berzinski, Christopher Gluck, Randy and Jane George, David and Maureen Godek, Charles Henderson, Christine Klotz, Kenneth Grant, Donald and Sandra Griffin, Cheryl Lubin, Brenda McCarny, and Richard Sutchenek, Michael and Shirley Nelson, Michael Nelson, Rodney Packer, Janice and James Rebney, James Veerbecker, Timothy Wagner, and Kathleen Bettis, and Catherine Walstrom. So, do we want to introduce this first before going into closed session? At least just give a little background of what it's about?
I thi- I think we should. Renee put to, Renee put together the memo, but we do have Meg Bridgeron representing us from Staff to Rosenbaum, working with our insurance company. And then also Dean Peters from Associated Appraisals, our assessor here, who can kind of give, give you, us all a briefer on where we're at, what the current status is before we go into closed.
Okay. So Meg, do you want to start and just kind of give a little background on it, please?
Sure. A majority of the folks that you just, whose names you just read.
Sure, a majority of the folks that you just, whose names you just read, actually all except one, are people who are appealing their, um, not appealing, they, they brought notices of claim seeking a, a partial refund. Because they claimed they didn't receive a notice of changed assessment. And some of them are saying, we just wanted to be what it was last year. I think two of them are saying there's two other, there's two other properties that sold in our condo development and so that is an indicator of what it should be and we want our assessment to be kind of in that area. They all seem to be under the impression that because they didn't receive, they, they say they didn't receive the notice, that they're entitled to just have their assessment be what it was or have it be at a different level. But that's not the case. All that means is that they didn't get the notice, they didn't have to go to board of review in order to come to do a notice of claim for you guys. So they still, it's, it's, it's not an automatic, oh, they must win because they didn't, or they must have their claim proved because they, that they didn't receive the notice. And then there's one person who, um, had some conversation or a conversation with the assessor. And Dean, you're gonna have to correct me if I'm wrong on this one. Um, and there was some discussion about changing it. The change wasn't made. She didn't go to board of review. And she is saying she should get, have it be what she had thought the agreement was it was gonna be reduced. And again, she didn't go to board of review. She also and this is, she would have received a notice from you, wouldn't she, if that had been? So she, she didn't receive a notice and she would have if it had been at the levels you guys talked about, correct? So that she, because she didn't receive a notice, she had the opportunity to go to board of review and she didn't. And so, you know, technically, um, she can't then bring a claim before you because she didn't go to board of review.
Okay. So the, the notice is, just to ensure you're saying there's no way for us to know for sure if they received it? Cause I was, do we send it out certified mail or do these just go out regular?
I'll let, uh.
Is that, is it okay? I mean, we can talk about this stuff in open session, I'm assuming, yes?
Oh, yeah, no, but I mean, I was gonna let him tell you about the process.
Okay.
If that's okay, cause it's his process.
Absolutely.
Good evening. Would it help, help if I go to the podium or?
I think you can, Keith, we're okay there? Yes?
Okay. Well, good evening, uh, Dean Peters, assessor. So the process, uh, that, that we go through under state law for noticing changes in assessment are that if the assessment changes from the previous year, the assessor is required to mail a notice of assessment, uh, to the property owner. And the notice is not required to be mailed certified or anything, it's just regular, uh, first-class mail. And, uh, and the notice needs to provide the previous year's assessed value, the new assessed value needs to provide the dates for the open book and the board review, which are the meetings that the property owner can go to to talk to the assessor informally or to contest the assessment formally. So last year was a big, a big year for assessment. We, uh, had a reevaluation of the entire village. I think we mailed out somewhere in the neighborhood of about five thousand property changes. And it is normal, uh, for us to get some calls from individuals, usually when tax bills go, go out saying, hey, I didn't receive my notice of assessment and, you know, we never know exactly why. We don't know if the individual just didn't open their mail and, and thought it was junk mail or if maybe a, a letter got lost in the mail or something. But it's normal to have a handful of those calls. And, and we did this year, um, but I guess one thing that caught my attention was when an individual named Mike Nelson contacted me and said that he had talked to his neighbors in the same condominium complex and there were, uh, a whole lot of them who said that they didn't receive their notice of assessment and very few who said they did and wondered if something happened with the notice mailing. Um, so I talked to the village, to Todd and to Caitlin, uh, about this and I said, well, I'll check internally to see if, if possibly something happened. And if something did happen, well, absolutely, I'm gonna be transparent and I'm gonna, you know, tell the board and tell the, you know, the officials about it. So our process for generating notices is that, uh, with all these mailings, and our company works with over two hundred municipalities in the state of Wisconsin. We do a heck of a lot of assessment mailings. So we have a, a room, uh, in our office dedicated with, uh, printers and, and machines that will fold envelopes, fold letters, put them in envelopes, seal the envelopes, put meter postage on and everything, and this is part of our standard process. And we have employees who are trained to do this. And so we did print the notices in-house. Uh, as far as I understand, nothing went wrong with the printing. Uh, I interviewed the individuals that worked in our office on this particular project of mailing the notices for the village. They didn't recall any, any, uh, jams or, or lost paper or anything like that that could have caused a notice not to get printed. My records indicate all the notices were generated, printed, and mailed. I thought about the possibility of, uh, counting the, the postage meters to say how many individual meter stamps were there, but the flaw with that is our system knows that when there are multiple properties owned by the same person to include up to anywhere between two and five letter, letters can be folded together and put in the same envelope. Uh, so we're never going to get any kind of an exact count from doing that either. So there really isn't any way for me to absolutely verify a hundred percent that, um, you know, that nothing went wrong in the process other than by talking to the individuals who, who worked on it and they said nothing unusual happened. So I can't confirm that there were notices that I didn't mail out. My information indicates that I did mail them out. That being said, I would absolutely understand being a person who had a changed assessment and an, an increased tax bill that I should have been noticed and, and, uh, would be unhappy if I, if I hadn't received something in the mail. But just looking at these, these claims, with the exception of the claim from Cheryl Lubin, which I can address separately, the rest of these are all individuals, I, I believe, from the same condominium development um, who say that they didn't receive their notice of assessment. They did put together materials that I reviewed in these claims. None of this, of the materials, to me, if they had come to me at open book, would I have changed the assessment? So I do have to stand by the assessed values on these. And then in, and, uh, and as far as the, the legal process for making a claim, normally you receive your notice of assessment in the mail. You can come to open book or you can come to board of review and contest your assessment. I know the village did a lot of work in, in, um, finding other ways to make property owners aware of the open book and board of review. There were, uh, I think it's the village newsletter, the village website, there were postings of these meetings and things. Um, but I understand that people are busy if they don't, if they're not aware of these things, they're relying on getting their notice in the mail to alert them of the changed assessment and the possible need to go to open book and board of review. So the state statutes say that failure to receive your notice of assessment does not invalidate the assessed value or the tax bill. But, uh, if the assessor did not mail a notice and did change the assessment, the property owner need not go to board of review in order to make a claim, uh, for refund of taxes. They can go through this process, come to the board directly and ask for a refund. Um, I think when I talked to Meg, uh, the difficulty is the statutes aren't clear about what kind of evidence the person should bring forward to, um, to justify their, their, the amount of their claim or the amount of the tax refund um, or the process that the board would go through to evaluate that evidence. The statutes are essentially silent on that. But I can tell you that I stand by the assessed values with the exception of Cheryl Lubin. So the, the situation with Cheryl Lubin is that she did come to open book, she did receive her initial notice of assessment. She sat with me personally at the open book. Um, we looked at comparable homes, we looked at the data on her property. And, uh, I verbally told her that I would change the assessed value and that I would send her something in the mail and that she would have it for her records. I evidently lost my notes, the change never got made and she called at tax time, understandably upset. And I told her that this is the next step in a process, um, and that I would come to the board and I would tell you, you know, exactly what happened. So she has a, a different nature to her claim than the rest of the claims.
Okay.
Proceedurally, the only issue with Cheryl is that, um, is that if you did receive a notice of assessment, that, uh, you are required to go to board of review in order to make this claim. The rest of them were not required to go to board of review because they did not receive a notice at all. So, um, that complicates the claim for Cheryl as well.
Okay.
Meg, anything else worth discussing in open session here before we go into closed?
Um, I don't know if you, they, two of them, two of the folks had sales, two sales in that one same condo development. I didn't know if you had any specific comments about that.
Well, we, we only had three, uh, three sales to use to set the assessed values in this condominium development. And, uh, you know, I don't have any reason to think that, that, that the assessments are excessive on any of these condominiums. I, I've looked at what the property owners provided. It wouldn't have been enough for me to change the assessment during the open book process. I can't say that a lot of these property owners had a tax increase. Part of the reason for that is because condominiums in general as a property type, uh, had been assessed farther below market value uh, in the previous revaluation because we still had lingering effects at that time from the recession. And if you remember, the recession hit Dane County condominiums very, very hard. Uh, so we had conservatively assessed the condominiums in the village, uh, the last revaluation and they needed to go up more than average to get to what the current sale prices and market values are. So these property owners, uh, noticed, well, hey, my assessment maybe went up more than the average for the village and, and my taxes may have gone up. I looked at the sales and there's a reason for that and, and I don't believe the assessments are incorrect.
Okay. So we would need a motion to go, I, should I read this first and then? Okay. The village board may convene in closed session as authorized by Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one G for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the village board who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy readacted by the village board with respect to litigation in which it is or likely to become involved. The village board may reconvene in open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session. Roll call vote to go in, wait, we need a motion first.
So moved.
Motion by Gary Hertzberg?
Second.
Second by Phil Williams. Roll call vote, please.
Joseph Hitzberger?
Yes.
Kristen Mergie?
Yes.
Phil Ryan? Chris Donald?
Yes.
Phil Williams?
Yes.
Aaron Maria?
Yes.
Gary Hertzberg?
Yes.